Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, January 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendow.
President.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Aramo.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Michael Tagney and Corporation Council Robert Agostisi. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Councilman Bendow, would you lead us?
(inaudible) All right, I just want to welcome everyone, and thank you for coming this evening.
Our first meeting of 2018, and we'll get this meeting started. Mr. Acting City Manager, do you have an update?
Yes. We had quite a significant snowfall a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to commend the CSEA workforce for their hard work in clearing the roads to keep us safe. The city initiated a thorough preparation and response plan, and the public works crews did a terrific job of executing it. During the height of the snow removal process, the city dispatched 61 pieces of equipment, including payloaders and plows, while our primary focus was initially for commuters making Park Avenue, Broadway, West Beach, and the Long Island Railroad parking area as safe as possible. Crews worked around the clock to ensure that all the roads were passable. We'd also like to thank Governor Cuomo and the New York State Department of Transportation for sending four additional pieces of heavy equipment to assist us in the snow removal process. Anyone that lives in Long Beach knows we have narrow roads, so we can't just plow the snow anywhere we want. We have to actually plow to the intersections and then truck it away, and they did a great job. After working all these hours, our sanitation department then the following Thursday did pick up every bit of garbage in the East End in really deplorable condition, so we really owe a debt of gratitude to our sanitation department. Due to the dramatic shift in temperatures last week, water mains and services in some areas of the city had frozen, which caused a discoloration of water. The city identified affected areas, and with a limited window of time to complete this task before the temperatures drop below freezing, city crews worked to flush those hydrants on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, abating the water, the discolorated water process. And we did monitor our water throughout the entire process, and it did meet Department of Health standards. And if anyone's experiencing any problems with that, they can contact DPW at 431-1011. Yesterday, we had a tremendous turnout for the MLK Commemorative March, which followed by a special commemorative program at the MLK Center. Thanks to everyone for joining us. A special thank you to our keynote speaker, Senator Michael Blake, who was probably one of the most inspiring speakers I heard. There was a tremendous, in the early morning program that Ms. Moore organized. We had quite a few clergy, elected officials, and the speeches got better and better as the morning went on. The Nehemiah Project, which is a vocal group, really was, did a tremendous job of entertaining everyone, and it really was a proper, proper salute to Dr. King. The comprehensive plan is moving along. The community's interest has been critical in guiding the city through the comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization program process. The 18th and final public meeting will be taking place on Thursday, January 25th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at the Magnolia Senior Center, 650 Magnolia Boulevard. City staff will be on hand to answer any questions. And if you want more information on the comprehensive plan, please go to longbeachlistens.com for additional information. It's a tough time of year and a tough economy for a lot of people, so our city clerk has joined in the conjunction with the Long Island Village Clerk and Treasures Association in accepting food donations through Wednesday, March 8th, in the city clerk's office on the third floor. Please visit the city's website for all listeners' suggested donations, and please give. The Long Beach Polar Bear will make their annual plunge, Super Bowl Sunday, February 5th, on Riverside Boulevard Beach with the proceeds going to Make-A-Wish. T-shirt sales will begin at 10:00 AM, and polar bears will gather on the beach at 12:30. It really is a very fun event. We take out our bandstand, we have music, we have a very engaging DJ or master ceremonies. So it is a lot of fun, and it's a good place to see all of our Long Beach friends. The Fourth Annual Long Beach Music Festival will be held at the library on February 9th and 10th, featuring several amazing local talents. Visit longbeachmusicfestival.com for more information. And lastly, the Long Beach New York Arts Council will be hosting its rescheduled First Friday event on Friday, January 19th, at the Long Beach Hotel with the Anthony CK Group. Also, the Arts Council is looking for board members, so if you are interested and have the necessary qualifications, we encourage you to submit your application. The application is on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acting City Manager. You touched on the celebration and events of yesterday. We did honor our sanitation workers. Looking back 50 years since Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated, being down in Memphis at the Memphis sanitation worker strike, so we did honor our sanitation workers. And just for a little more comprehensive view of what happened yesterday, I'd like to call up our Director of Community Development and Residential Outreach, Mr. Marv McMoore, and just give us an overview.
Good evening, and thank you for calling me up, Council President. As the city manager, Acting City Manager discussed, we had a wonderful day, and I want to thank you guys all for coming yesterday. But as we know, the work to honor and preserve Dr. King's legacy doesn't just happen on MLK Day, it has to happen the day after MLK Day, and the months, and the weeks after MLK Day. So I'd like to report on some of the investments the Department of the Community Development has made into the MLK Center and into that community. First off, we have our MLK Senior Program that operates every Tuesday and Thursday at the MLK Center, in which we have a cook who prepares food and programming for our seniors, and we're looking to expand that and make sure that we are treating our seniors the way that they deserve to be. Second, we just leveraged the CDBG funds to make sure that we're making expansion of investments into improving the public facilities at the MLK Center, including a performing arts room. We have a studio that now has a full-length mirror. The dance-off has been doing instructions in there to make sure that we are inspiring our youth to use their musical talents for good. We also just unveiled yesterday MLK Way. So now the intersection of Pine Street and Riverside Boulevard now reads MLK Way to, you know, give back and to make sure that we preserve the historic legacy of African-Americans and blacks to our community and the North Park to Long Beach as a whole. We also put in a lecture room at the MLK Center that's fully furnished to make sure that we can have some college readiness programs for our youth there. Lastly, we have been doing residency measures into the building. We put, well, the Department of Public Works, they invested in this, to put improved drainage into the parking lot of the MLK Center to make sure that we start to mitigate the flooding around that area. And secondly, in the resilience piece, we also improved solar panels on top of the facility so that we can make sure that we are energy efficient in the building, which costs $130,000. So over the past year and a half, over the past year into the MLK Center and the surrounding areas, we've made over $200,000 at your leadership of this council and the city manager, so we're grateful to continue to do that in my department. And again, that it's important that we uplift and empower minorities, not just on MLK Day, not just on Black History Month, but the weeks and days and months that follow. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just add, we also painted the entire inside of the MLK Center using mostly city CSEA workers volunteering to do that. A feel-good part of the story is we used 106 gallons of paint that were completely donated when the vendor found out that all of our local workers were doing this work for free. He felt he should give something back and provide all the paint free of charge.
Mr. McMoore, can I just once again ask you a question about the surveys? In times past, when you were a part of the Empower North Park Initiative, you worked on engaging in assessment and collecting some data. So are we still doing that at this point?
Sure. So in 2015, we did the Empower North Park Survey, in which we went door-to-door. I'm using interns from within the community that were duilingual, so that we make sure that we are reaching both English and Spanish speakers within the neighborhood. And pretty much, like, you know, I think it's important that as a council and as a government that we are responsive to those surveys from 2015. So we did collect about 300 surveys. We know the issues in the community, we know what the residents want, so I think it's important to deliver on that, and that's what these investments into the MLK Center have tried to do, and we're going to continue to do that. But yes, we're continuously meeting, talking to residents. I met with the Board of MLK last week, the Concerned Citizens of North Park last month, Latino Civic Association as well. So I think that, like, you know, we have to be driven by data, which we got from the survey. We have to continue to get feedback as we make the investments. But yes, we are trying to be as comprehensive as possible.
I know you're a champion also for our seniors over at the MLK Center, so will you engage in surveys there as well?
Absolutely, and I forgot to mention, we did, Pastor Melton, who's on my staff from the first Christian light, he administered a survey in December into the senior program. We got some feedback, and we're working on that feedback. I know one of the things that you guys have been pushing collectively for the council, on the council, have been for a third day at the MLK, you know, because this is really a big opportunity for the seniors to leave their house, and usually one of the only times that, you know, some of them, the only time they actually leave, so we definitely want to continue to increase programming, but also make sure it's not just having programs just to have programs, to make sure they are quality, that they are, you know, actually growing from these programs.
Thank you.
Sure. Any more questions?
I just want to thank all the members of the committee, as well as you. I know you sat on the committee that planned the event at the MLK Center that took place yesterday, and you brought some information back to the city, and we were able to partner and make sure that it was, and it was a fabulous event that included so many people from the community, so I want to thank you for doing that, as well as all of the committee members who took the time and effort to really be part of that event. It was really, really very special.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMoore.
Our first public hearing this evening is for a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a smoothie juice bar.
I have to open the hearing, right? I open the hearing? Is the business owner here? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Wesley Shin, 234 Jefferson Avenue, Island Park, New York.
And could you tell us what's the nature of your business?
It's going to be primarily smoothies, juices, acai bowls, some more, small grab and go.
Okay. And do you expect roadside deliveries?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time? And the amount of employees?
It's going to be, at this point, eight.
Eight employees, okay. I would encourage you to put a bike rack out front.
I was going to request that.
You're planning on doing that?
Yes.
Okay, great. I really appreciate that. If you called the Department of Public Works.
Not at this time, no. I will add that.
They could probably set you up with one of ours, you know, so that they match what's going on in the rest of the city. Does any of the council have any questions?
Do you know your hours of operation, days of the week?
In the summertime, we're going to maximize the amount of daylight hours, and it's going to be probably between 7:30 till about 8, 9 o'clock at night.
That's during the summer?
Correct.
Do you have an anticipated frame for the winter?
Not at this time. They will be shorter, but probably around from 9 till about 7 maybe.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
Anyone from the public? Come on up.
Good.
Please state your name.
Allison Blanchett.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking the bike rack question. I just wanted to ask if the owner of the shop would be willing to have not just one bike rack for customers, but two bike racks, because we need short-term and long-term parking. I'd also like this council to consider that there is now, I love the idea of this new business, however, we're now putting more vehicles on our streets, and we're going to have more people circling our residential neighborhoods, looking for parking. At the corner of where this is, it's Virginia, correct? Virginia and Beach Street. This Acting City Manager might be able to answer a little bit of this, but I do believe that that is a fairly high-crash area. There may have been a couple fatalities, serious injuries at that intersection over the past decade. We need crosswalks there, we need a no-turn-on-red sign there before we even consider opening a business where there's going to be a high pedestrian and bicycle customer base going in. And as far as the deliveries, I wanted to ask him one more question about that, because having a restaurant background, I know that there will be deliveries, and I'd like to know what hours these deliveries are going to be from the vendors. I'd also like to know if this business is going to have food delivery. So are we going to have even more vehicles on our streets, circling the block, whatever, looking for parking or double parking while they're waiting for their, you know, the packages to come out to deliver? So what I'm asking here is, I don't want to stop this person from getting their parking waiver, but I'd like you guys to seriously consider, before cramming another, what will definitely be a very busy shop in the West End, probably a high-traffic shop, consider the concept of parking management, consider the concept of planning before giving away parking waivers like your Oprah, and parking waiver, parking waiver. This is, people's lives are at play here, and this is important. And so I would like you for this particular parking waiver to consider what I'm saying, to please consider a no-turn-on-red right there, where the auto body shop is, and to consider putting crosswalks in there. And moving forward on any other parking waivers, consider smarter planning before, and consider parking management before giving away parking waivers, especially in the West End. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, can I just ask you one question? So you did say no deliveries, delivery service is what I believe you were answering. Is that correct?
Delivery for product I'm selling, or deliveries that I receive?
I believe you were answering product that you were selling.
Selling, yeah.
And as far as product receiving.
The danger of the product that I'm selling, frozen product, it's not really lends itself to be delivered.
Right. And as far as your deliveries that you're going to be getting, do you expect many trucks?
The max amount of time I'm expecting a truck to be sitting on the street is probably 15 minutes, 10, 15 minutes. I mean, deliveries probably twice a month.
Twice a month?
Yeah.
And that's something that you can do on off-hours to not affect the traffic?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
And I believe that facility lends itself to deliveries on Virginia Avenue, not on Beach Street. There is a back, a side door.
(inaudible).
Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? Close the hearing, next item.
Our second public hearing is for a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a bakery.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Catherine Schmenty, 76 Kirkwood Street.
And the nature of your business?
Bakery. Baked by the Ocean is the name of my bakery, and that's my neighbor, I guess.
Okay. Hours of operation?
Seven to seven on slower months, and open later during the warmer months.
And just to go back, the bakery, baked goods, cakes, cupcakes, cookies, stuff like that?
Baked goods, tarts, cookies.
Bread?
A few breads, confections, chocolates, packaged retail items, and soft-serve ice cream.
Gotcha. And do you expect many deliveries?
I would get deliveries once or twice a week before 8:00 AM, and I have the corner space, and my delivery entrance is on Virginia. I also have a parking spot in the back for any deliveries I would make personally. My space has a parking spot, so.
Okay.
To answer the question.
And we would encourage definitely getting a bike rack out front.
I would love to get a bike rack, especially for my own bike, if that's possible.
Yes. Okay. You've just contacted DPW, and we could probably work, we could work something out.
Great.
Does anyone from the council have any questions? Anyone from the public have any other questions, comments? No? Seeing none? Thank you. Close the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item 1 is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a smoothie juice bar. Hearing has been held on this item already. Item 2 is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a bakery. Hearing has been held on this item already. Item 3 is a resolution to submit public road information to the New York State Department of Transportation.
This item is, we get reimbursed by New York State Department of Transportation for maintaining our roads, and after reviewing our roadmap, it was discovered that a section of East Walnut Street, .91 miles, was left off the map. So we are making this resolution to put it back on the map so we can receive the right funding, which will be a little higher than we get now. It's not going to be tremendous, but every penny helps.
Did we lose any funding because of the error?
Every year that we were reimbursed, we were underfunded.
Will we be able to get any of that back, or just going forward?
No, just going forward.
Okay. Anyone else from the council have any questions? Seeing none? Any questions or comments from the public? Mrs. Blanchett? Just state your name again.
Sure, Allison Blanchett. I don't have, you ran out of things, so I'm just hearing this. Who is responsible for putting in the stuff for the reimbursements?
Department of Public Works.
The Department of Public, so all these years, we were missing point, what was it?
Point nine.
Point, almost a mile? We were missing. It was missing from a map for how long? How many years?
I don't know that answer.
Just for a long time.
We discovered it, and we're correcting it now.
Oh, my God. Seriously. Do you have a general idea of how much money that was?
No, I don't. We have approximately 52 miles of roadway.
Right.
So it wasn't, it was a half a percent, one, 2%.
2% that we've been missing on. And that was DPW?
Yes.
You said? That's tasked with that? Okay, that's great. Thanks.
That's quite unfortunate. Anyone else from the public have any question or comment? Seeing none? Next item.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals for the water purification plant from the lowest responsible bidders.
Yes, as you know, we must, we pump the water out of the wells, we purify it, and then we transmit it to the houses. It's necessary for us to make that water safe, and these are two of the most, or two very important chemicals in that process. Bids were open on January 4th at 11:00, and these reflect that bid.
Any questions from the council?
It says bids were received, just going forward, if it's, I'd like to see the bids as well. It's in the city charter that the council's supposed to be presented with the, all the bids, as well as the city manager's recommendation for which one to go with.
It should have been attached to this item on the agenda for you. We had three different bids.
Okay. It's not a package. So just going forward.
Okay. Do you know how many bids? There were four bids? Was it four?
Thomas J. Holland, Chemtrade Chemicals, US Alco, Graymont, and Carmuse Lime. And the bids were actually almost exactly identical to the last couple of years. On the package you should have received, they compared the 2015, 16, and 17 prices. The Chemtrade Chemicals was awarded the aluminum sulfate bid, and it went from .8208 to .888. And the hydrated bulk lime went from 196.50 a ton to 197, so 50 cents per ton increase. So the pricing has been pretty stable.
Okay. And just moving forward, just that little sheet that you have with all the different bids, if you can make sure they're in the council's packet?
Absolutely.
Any questions from the public, comments? Nope? Seeing none? Next item.
Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase two utility vehicles for the city's police department.
I'd like the police mission to come up. These are, these are two vehicles, they are ATV-type vehicles, which would keep the officers closer to the sand, to make it much safer for the sunbathing and bathing public. It also gives us a lot of mobility in and around the beach park. Every day, at the end of the day, we use these vehicles when the lifeguards go home to keep people out of the water, so they need to be right down by the tide line, and it's a real safety issue, and there's no way to patrol three miles of beach without a couple of extra vehicles.
Any questions from the council?
I was looking into this, and I'm not able to find a Kawasaki Mule SX4x4 SC SE. There's an XC SE. I'm just, want to know if that's possibly a typo? Or if there's a different model that I can't find on the Kawasaki website?
I will get that information tomorrow.
Okay. And then just one other is on the Polaris. The base price on that model is $13,300. I went and I kind of loaded it up with pretty much anything I could think of that we might need, and I'm having difficulties getting up to $19,000. So I'm just wondering, is this thing outfitted differently somehow that brings the price up that much, or?
The problem is, it's a bid process, so we don't get to do competitive buying. We have to take whatever bid is lowest from a responsible bidder. So they, a lot of the vendors do know this, and we don't get the benefit of the best price.
So we can't go up the road and buy one, huh?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Maybe the next city manager.
Do you know how many bids we got for that one?
No, I do not.
Anything else from the council? General public? Anybody else? Ms. Volasevich?
What? What? Name for the record? Mary Volasevich. I was just wondering, I haven't gone to many beaches with the lifeguards around the country, California, Texas, Florida, Virginia. Many of them get, like, these ATVs and these small pickup trucks that you see the surfboards on, like Baywatch. They get these things donated. Do we have anyone that could ever write to some of these larger companies and see if you could get things donated? Have we ever thought of doing that? I've been, I'm telling you, I've been, even till now, when my boys were young, I started. So you're talking about many years. And you go down to Florida, you go down to Texas, you go to California, and it will give the company's name underneath, they're donated, and the patrol up here. And I don't know why we don't do things like that, to save ourselves tens and maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars, instead of always going and buying, especially, you know, the beach stuff. Did you ever ask, like, companies that we buy from to perhaps chip in? I don't know the word I'm looking for, but.
Sponsor.
Yeah. Have we ever done that, to save ourselves?
We do get sponsors, not for necessarily tangible goods like that, but like, our fireworks show is a $12,000 fireworks show that is donated.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I've seen it.
Right.
And I've talked to them.
Okay.
Okay? And they donate it. They get dealerships to donate the smaller pickup trucks that aren't, you know, so humongous, and they put the boards on top, they can put a patient in the back. We have to need, we need to start looking at things that we can benefit from, and they benefit too.
Right.
I mean, we get loads of people from all over that would see the sponsors' names.
Right.
We need to look into things like this. Doesn't seem like a lot, but three, four trucks.
It all adds up.
Four ATVs. You got some donated ones before from somebody for the lifeguards. Am I correct? Scott, you're shaking your head.
I think those were, I think those were grants as well. I think those were.
No, they were donated. They were donated.
No, they were grants from the, I don't know, 32 blocks.
I'm talking about eight, eight years ago or so, there were some donated.
Okay.
They might have got wiped out in Sandy, but.
I appreciate the recommendation, and I could see how it would be very valuable to a business to have their name shooting all over the beach.
Yeah, I mean, if it's only 40, 50,000, that's something you could put to, it's something that we need in the infrastructure or something. Just a thought.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Volasevich.
Thank you.
You went twice already. Just state your name and address for the record.
Lou Dubau. First of all, Happy New Year. Congratulations to John and to Kumi and to Scott and to our new temporary city manager. Quick question, what John brought up, and I wasn't quite sure of the answer, this stuff that goes out for, everything has to go out for bid in terms of the trucks?
Everything we purchase.
Is that a city regulation?
No, that's New York State WICs law.
That's a New York State law? Oh, okay.
Everything we purchase.
So there's really no way around it to get something less expensive? I think John had a good point on that.
No, it's actually called the WICs law.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubow. Ms. Blanchett?
Oh, my God. I'm getting heckled back there. Can you make them stop?
Just state your name one more time.
Allison Blanchett. So, we purchased four ATVs in July, I believe, to replace some of the city's aging ones. How many do we have? Is this added on... Are these two added on to the inventory? Or are these replacing two that are aging out? That's... I'm gonna... Can I... I'll go through my things. And I see that there was only one bid response here, which is shocking considering how many people sell these things. Only one person would respond, which kind of brings me to a little bit of your point there about the cost, because I did the same thing you did. We share that nerd thing. And yeah, that's not... This isn't the cheapest price that you can get these for. So, I'm wondering, can you hold off on voting for this and keep the bid thing open? And see if we can get some more responses that are a little more competitive? I don't believe we're in a hurry to... Correct me if I'm wrong, in a hurry to get these if you had to leave it open for another month? Because I believe that you can get a better price on these.
So, we do... Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. I mean, can you leave the bid open until you get a certain amount of responses?
We'd have to...
Can you reopen it?
We'd have to start the process all over again.
Then start the process all over again. You only got one response, and I suggest...
We reach out and do follow New York State law to, you know, to get the different bids. And there may just be one dealer in this local that wanted a bid for it.
Then how about you open it even more? Because if you're only getting one response from all of the dealers out there who sell this, that's pretty insane, and I don't think...
It's common.
Is it really common? Well, I mean, maybe for Long Beach. Is this common in other places too, one response? Whenever there's only one response for something so common like this, the previous times when you had a bid open for these ATVs, how many people responded? Just one?
I don't know.
So, I think you should reopen it.
I'm saying in general, it's common that you only get one response to a government bid, because very often, businesses don't necessarily want to deal with a government agency.
Oh, I can't imagine why.
Because it takes a while to get paid. So, I mean, it's common. It's common. On things, you would think you'd get hundreds of bids. You'd get one or two.
Okay, well, I'm gonna suggest to the whole council that you just maybe put this off, reopen the bid, and hope that you can find a way to open it up more, get it out there to more channels, and try to find more competitive... You know, get some more competitive bids in there, because I'm quite certain someone out there is gonna sell you these for a lot less. This is our... This is our money here that, you know, you're spending. So, thank you.
We do a very aggressive push on the bids. In addition to just putting out a bid, we don't just put it in the local paper that we're looking to buy something. The fact that this is two small vehicles, it doesn't engender a lot of work to put... To go through the bid process, because the profit margin isn't so great. We are buying two, three police cars, one for the auxiliary, two for the police department at the... Down the road, and we were able to piggyback off state contract. Unfortunately, as much as you think this is a very popular item, it's not a popular item for government, because there is no state bid. When we buy cooperatively throughout the state, we always get a much better price. But the fact that the City of Long Beach is looking for just two single items, it didn't generate a lot of interest, and that's one of the reasons we have some of these problems. Like with the chemicals, we buy so many tons, it was worth the companies that specialize in that chemical, and there's only a few of them, so they can all bid on that very quickly. But vehicles, there's a lot of details that go into them, and they're just not... A lot of vendors are not willing to do the work in addition to going through the whole procurement process and then the delayed payments. Yes, these are two replacements. If you... On your way home, you can go to the end of the diagonal parking on Center Street, and you'll see two rotted-out ATVs there that we're looking to get rid of.
And Ms. Blanchett, just to touch on something that you brought up, the issue of receiving one bid. Since it is a common response when municipalities put things out for bid responses, last week I had raised the issue of possibly addressing, if we do receive one bid, a mandatory rebid unless there is an articulated reason from a department head as to an emergency or an urgency. I think the council's looking into that, and it's something the council's considering. So, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. It's being reviewed.
Anybody else from the public? Okay. Next item.
Item... Excuse me. Item six is a resolution establishing a standard workday for the elected members of the city council of the City of Long Beach for the purposes of determining... Excuse me. Reporting days worked for the New York State and local employees' retirement system.
Okay. The city council, as all civil service workers of sorts, are entitled to pension credits. The city council has to log their time. That's why there's no value or issue with newly-elected Councilman Bendo, because he hasn't established a log. So, based on the logs that the council has put forth, they're allowed to get some pension credits for the time they spend at meetings, civic events, and such. And this is why there's different values to each council member's name to get them into the retirement and social security system and be fairly compensated.
Is there any questions from the council on the last and final item? Any questions from the public? Ms. Blanchett? State your name.
Allison Blanchett. Tired of being the only one coming up asking these questions. Mr. Aramo, could you explain why yours are backdated to 2016? And I'm curious what it means. I understand that it's kind of like an average thing, how many hours you... You know, you're kind of expected to work. Figure six hours a week.
So, they're all from the same time period, which is September, October, November, December of 2016.
Okay. So, you're just kind of going back for hours?
For all three of us. For all three of us, they are.
Oh, the dates are... The dates are wrong, then.
But aren't they... They're supposed to be all...
The dates are wrong.
Dave, they're all from 2016, right? And they're reaffirming? They had a... Signed a letter? The logs are all from 2016.
Okay, your dates are wrong here, then. I don't know what you...
That's our term.
That's your term? Ah, okay, I gotcha. So, this is going back to 2016 on forward?
2000... It's the last... The log is from the last four months of 2016.
So, it has nothing to do with 2017?
Nothing to do with 2017. Other than that, some of them were already voted on in 2017. There was a problem with it. The state asked us to re-pass it again today.
Okay. And can you explain how the days... What that means? The days per month, how it's different for Scott, Hume, and yourself? You have 18.98 versus, you know, the other ones have different...
Yeah, it's just a log you keep of everything that you do, every event you go to, and they come up with some kind of average.
So, in 2016, you worked just an average more days during September, October, November?
I guess. I'm... We were talking about this earlier.
Okay. I'm just curious, wasn't that... Was that an election season that you were running? Were you running for...
Well, it was after. It was mostly after.
September, October.
December's a very busy month. Lots of events, lots of stuff.
Right, for campaigning.
It's just a log. It's just a log. So, if you make phone calls for an hour, you write down an hour of phone calls, you know? It's like that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that you were working that many days per month while campaigning and working full-time?
No, 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 no. No, do not put words in my mouth.
Okay, so September...
You said while campaigning.
So, this is September, October, November, December of 2016?
Yes, September, October, November, December, correct.
Okay, and that is overlapping with the time that you were also campaigning? Okay.
That was overlapping with the time while I was campaigning, while I was on a leave of absence from my full-time job. Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That is correct. What is... In the back? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Miles, and I live in Long Beach. Happy New Year, guys. This question... I have a few questions, so bear with me. So, you all do your own time sheets, essentially, is what you're saying?
A daily log.
A daily log. And there's no one... There's no check and balance system to verify where you've been and how many hours you're actually working a week?
I guess not.
No. And everybody has a different number of hours that they're working a week, but they all have the same title and position of councilperson.
Can I just clarify something? I think that it's not a regular time sheet in the way that you would envision it, that you come in and you clock out. There's a period of time when either you're first appointed. For example, mine was for a period of time... Obviously, not in 2016, because I was not on the council then. For a period of time that the state mandates, you keep a log of the things that you do that are related to the council, whether it's council meetings, events that you go to, community meetings, that sort of thing. And then there is a formula, is my understanding, that's taken care of by the Comptroller's Office that comes up with this figure of the days and the time. That's why each of ours is a little bit different, because they aren't exactly the same exact time, each of us. And it isn't something that you continuously keep. You keep it for a period of time, is my understanding, and then you submit that. And it's taken care of by the Comptroller's Office, and they take care of the formula and come up with the number. I don't know if that... It's not the same as a typical...
I understand what you're saying.
Like clocked time sheet.
But I want to make...
For example, Mr. Miles, yes, at the MLK event...
Right.
A couple of councilpeople left early. So, their time would be different than the councilpeople that stayed till the end of the show or the end of the program.
Right.
So, sometimes people have to leave early, sometimes people stay longer. There's conversations that, you know, maybe council business afterwards that would keep one person there. So, there's some events that one councilperson may not go to, so they wouldn't get credit. And you have to understand something here. You're looking at a very insignificant number. This is a pension credit. This is not a salary. So, this goes into a major formula, and by and large, a lot of the council members will never receive enough credits to get a pension at the end of this. But they have every right to clock their hours. It's fair, and...
I agree with that. It's fair to clock their hours.
And they do keep their own hours. And I have a lot of faith in this council that they're honest people. So, I think that they should be able to keep their own hours. And in addition, I think that's rude. They shouldn't be able to keep their own hours, and the comptroller does do a double-check to make sure. And the fact that all the hours are so close, so closely aligned, it makes a lot of sense that they're all keeping similar things.
But you are aware that a councilperson... I remember Mike went to jail for this exact thing about his pension service and his time.
No, Ronnie, that was unemployment.
And I understand, but it was about the time being recorded, saying that it wasn't... Because unemployment's three days a week consecutive or more, right? And these are... These are hours sporadically in. So, I was like, wow, he kind of went to jail, but how does the system work if he's not working every day of the week? But I want to get back to this other thing.
Well, that proves actually the system does work.
I'm not sure. I feel like it got a bad deal on that, because everybody's getting a pension, and it's... It works different. Your time is different from apparently everybody else's time. So, we shouldn't have looked... It shouldn't have been looked at that same way. And I've been through the wringer with unemployment before, I know how that works. And I know that people make things up, and that it can happen. Mistakes happen, people slip through the cracks. Is there an office for this council to work out of should they want to come in and do something here? I remember that was asked for when you were first appointed, Ms. Moore. And I was warning, do we yet have an office for any of the five of them to actually sit down and do work if they were to come in and do work?
We don't necessarily have our own office, but if you're gonna have a meeting, the city manager's office is usually available.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked for an office back in 2016. So, I was told because the city is going to, in some way, restructure City Hall, that an office would be created for us at that time. Obviously, it's taking longer than what we anticipated. And at that point, that's why I had made the request at that time to the former city manager that we would have the voicemail so that residents would have access to us at the various numbers, and that's what we have now. But in terms of an actual physical space where residents can come in and see us, we still, at this point, do not have an office space.
Well, I think if you're gonna have salaries, and there's going to be time allotted, there ought to be a place allotted that's not the city manager's space as well, that they could have their own separate space. It's been two years now, and nothing has happened with that. All right. So, thank you for your answers concerning this. Oh, and we do want to give our sanitation workers a good nod, hand clap, all that good stuff. But the snow removal this year was like one of the worst ever. Just wanted that on record.
Anybody else? Mrs. Hessian? Please state your name and address for the record.
Eileen Hessian. No more address, right?
I have to ask.
You mentioned that Mr. Bendo is not on here, because he just came on board, but why isn't Anissa?
Oh, okay, so I can speak to that. My employer is actually Nassau Community College. And Nassau Community College is a joint employer, Nassau County, as well as State University of New York. And so, I have my own unique pension plan created for employees of Nassau Community College, and it just wouldn't really be economically feasible for me to start with this pension program.
Anybody else? Please come up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Nora Egan. I don't... Not giving my address. Just to clarify, Ms. Diamond, when you say "community meeting", are we essentially paying for you to attend, like, a civic association meeting? Or...
All of us perform a number of different duties as a councilperson. We go to a number of... Each of us go to a community meeting, whether it's a civic association meeting where we're asked to represent the city there or award ceremonies. I mean, we all attend a number of events throughout the city where we are acting as city councilpeople. So, yeah, it does include civic association meetings.
It's very disappointing to hear that essentially we're paying our representatives to come and, you know, just sit and talk with us. So, thank you.
This resolution is for pension credit.
Yeah, no, I know.
It's not the safe thing.
Yeah, well...
And if I may, just to clarify again, this is not attached to salary, and this doesn't necessarily... It's a little bit of a misnomer. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're accruing pension credits. If you're already a member of the New York State pension system, you can't get, in essence, time and a half. So, this... These credits that are established for some councilmembers do not add to your pension. They're just required to be reported to the state hour-wise.
Okay. And actually, then, just one more question. Where do I... Can I find your hours that you were there here tonight from like 7:00 to 9:05, or tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00, or...
Ms. Egan, as I mentioned initially, you log for a certain period of time, and then you don't continue to log. It's not a continuous thing that you have to do. Some of us do keep and understand where we are. We each have a calendar. We know what we spend our time doing, but it's not a continuous... As my understanding, it's not a continuous log that you keep. You keep it for a period of time, and then you move on, and that's how they establish this. And as Councilwoman Mandell mentioned, it's... Most of us are already in a pension system, and this doesn't really add very much, if anything, to it at all. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. That's it.
Okay, on to the voting. So, item one is a resolution granting waiver for street parking requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a smoothie juice bar.
Introduce the move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item two is a resolution granting waiver for street parking requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a bakery.
Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo?
Uh, just to Ms. Blain's chance to comment about the, sorry, just to Ms. Blain's chance to comment about the, the sign and the crosswalk and things like that. What you're really addressing is, is a much larger issue, not specific to the business, but to your point, we do need to discuss that and, and look at that for the bigger picture. But with that, I vote yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to also just request some data with respect to the no turn on red on that particular corner. If we can just have some additional information, but I still vote yes for this item.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item three is a resolution to submit public road information to the New York State Department of Transportation.
Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals for the water purification plant from the lowest responsible bidders.
Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase two utility vehicles for the city's police department.
Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution establishing a standard workday for the elected members of the City Council of the City of Long Beach for the purposes of determining and reporting day's work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system.
Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
City manager's monthly personnel report has been filed by the city clerk who will make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
Yes. All right, in just a moment, we're going to begin our Good and Welfare. Everyone that signed up will get three minutes. That's right. Everyone that comes up will have three minutes to speak. And we do, we do ask that you speak with respect and to please maintain, what am I looking for? Decorum.
If I could just, um, if you just excuse me, I have family obligations. Today's my birthday. I have a five-year-old waiting to be born with me and family waiting at my house. So please excuse me, I have to leave early tonight. I will watch later tonight and follow up accordingly. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to Councilman Mendel.
Now that he's gone, he looks good for 65.
Okay, Mr. James Hutchinson? It's Mrs. Hutchinson, Hutchinson's not here? Dolores Miller? Give me his thing back and put it right here. Mr. Dolores Miller? Hello, Mrs.? Hi, please just state your name and address, just your name.
Dolores Miller. I live at 210 Shore Road here in Long Beach. I guess I'm starting the year off hopefully right. But I'm here because I remember when your past president had spoke and said that Councilwoman Alicia Anissa Moore would become the president or the speaker. And it's been a while and I've come every now and then, but I've not heard her speak in the position that by right I feel she should be in. So I feel that there's been some underhanded dealings and I know that they are liars. I have no doubt about that. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I just think that, thank you. I just think that it should be that this year you start off right. You start off by telling the truth and doing what you say you're going to do. It don't make sense. It don't make sense. I've been here since I was 17 years old and I just had a birthday of being 78 years old. And this council, not meaning everybody, but it has not changed. It's the same. It remains the same. Crooked dealing, underhanded dealing, lying, backbiting. And, and what you don't realize that is what you do to one another is going to come back up on you. Five times or maybe even more. So when my time is up, let me know. So I think that really by right, you ought to do the right thing. I know what your goals and your aims are with reference to the, the plan for the city. I, I know because I say, I've been here for a long time. And I know how it has been that people, buildings have been burned, a whole lot of crooked things. And it has drove out the underserved, the poor and the minorities, I put it that way. So it's time to stop also being, well, I won't use the word prejudice, discriminating, discriminating. The spirit of Trump is in the land and I know y'all don't like me to say that about your president, but he's a liar too. And this is what is taking place today and it shouldn't be. You all are young. I'm on my way out this world. I really am. Some of you, you have yet, years ahead of you. You've got your children. Do the right thing. If nobody stand with you, do the right thing and God will bless you. Thank you all very much.
Ms. Kathy Williams?
Good evening.
Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Mrs. Kathy Williams of 80 Court, Long Beach, Long Island. I've been a resident of Long Beach for 58 years. And I come before you tonight in the regards of the, um, the seating of our Councilwoman, Ms. Anissa Moore. It's highly questionable. The whole city celebrated when Councilman Moore was sworn in in 2016 with the highest amount of votes, I believe. And then she was told by the city council president, Mr. Lynn Torres, that she needed to learn to how and take time to become a council president. What does a council woman need to know about being a president when she should be among colleagues who would help her? But that's beside the point. Again, in 2017, rules changed several times. First, we were told it would take a six-month rotation. It sounds reasonable. We're reasonable people. Then we were told in one year, something else would take place. But in, in 2017, the council never held a vote. On January the 1st, 2018, an election was held and she wasn't even considered. Why do the rules for this, um, the only black woman elected in the city of Long Beach keep changing? It's like musical chairs, but you don't get to sit here, Serafina. You don't fit in. Uh, history is repeating itself, my brethren. Back in the Reconstruction era, if you know anything about history, after slavery, the president at that time put in something called, quote, "Black Code." That was to keep black people from rising up from slavery and becoming real citizens in the United States. You can find it going, look in your history, you'll find out. Being politician, you should be aware of that part of history because I see it repeating itself again. Tactics. They put up tactics to keep the minority groups in place. And then when the North heard about this shameful tactic, they was in uproar about how could you do this? The people coming up out of slavery, becoming responsible people in the Union. We don't have a North to stand up for us today. We have you are the North. We ask you to do what's right. I don't have, we don't have anything against Ms. Diamond. She's innocent. I don't know why you as a woman didn't stand up and say, this is wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's shameful and despicable. It really is.
I guess I'll go back here. Uh, Mr. Hutchinson? I can't read this one. Please just state your name for the record.
James Hutchinson, Long Beach, New York. Before you start that three-minute timer there, with all due respect, I heard Mr. McMoore say something about CSEA painted the Long Beach Martin Luther King Center. It is correct, they painted the outside of the Long Beach Martin Luther King Center. They did paint the inside of the Martin Luther King Center. The entire gym room was painted by myself, my company, Keller Painting Corp., 2 Cherry Street, Bay Shore, New York, 11706. He never received no thank yous. I worked there. I didn't make two cents. I painted the entire gym room. My boss from Keller Painting did a $25,000 paint job on that gym room. I need the record to reflect that. No disrespect to Marvin. Maybe he wasn't told that. Myself with a couple of volunteers.
Just excuse me, James.
Go ahead.
It wasn't Marvin that said that. I said that and I apologize.
Okay, all right. Okay, just my company painted that gym room. Uh, my reason being here today too is about the, uh, the city council president. I was here and it was told that Ms. Moore, she didn't know, um, she didn't know the ropes. She would get a chance, it would rotate. Uh, I've seen these rotations happen. And, you know, it's, it's kind of hurtful, you know, to see that she's passed over the process in which it's, in, uh, and, and, and the way that is carried down, okay? She had an historical race. I understand Lynn Torres was the first Hispanic. She was the first African-American. I could say first black woman to crack that ceiling. And not only that, the know-how, what does, like Ms. Williams said, what does it take to be a city, a city council president? She's been here for two years, okay? I would have thought that Ms. Diamond would have said, you know what? Yeah, this is wrong. Let me take a step to the side and let, and let Ms. Moore, you know, be at least the vice president. You know, that's what, then other people start looking at stuff and says, you know, well, you know, this, this process, is this process, is it racist? You know, and I'm the least amount of person to start talking about racist stuff. But if you look at it, like I said, I know for a fact you guys have meetings before meetings. You know what I'm talking about? Okay, so I would love to be a fly on the wall, just hear some of the stuff that's probably said. Anthony Aramo as the president, Scott. And homie, you guys should be ashamed of yourself. This is wrong, okay? Also, 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 with that lawsuit, again, with that lawsuit, I have to say it because I'm here. That lawsuit, an 84-year-old woman was taken out of her house from Channel Park Homes and marched over there to the courtroom. No other place in Long Beach, not the Western, not the Eastern, nowhere. Channel Park Homes and 225. People were waltzed into courtroom. Those were black people. It's wrong, man. It's dead wrong. And what I have to say is that you guys are going to run for office again and you can't continue to slap the people in North Park in the face with stuff like this and stuff like what happened with that whole lawsuit thing. You know what I'm saying? What about if someone came to your house and took your grandmother out of the house and said she signed her signature fraudulently? That's just wrong. Okay, it's wrong. Then you guys come to the black community looking for votes. Think about that.
Thank you. Ms. Rosalyn Wade? Please state your name for the record.
Rosina Wade.
Oh, Rosina, my apologies.
Good evening. On January 1st, 2016, we achieved a victory. First African-American elected to the Long Beach City Council. Not only a victory for the North Park community, but for the entire city of Long Beach. Councilwoman Moore has never missed a city council meeting in two years. She has reached out and worked tirelessly to bring all people in Long Beach together. She has demonstrated strong leadership in the past two years. Honesty, accountability, empathy, inspiration and confidence. However, still denied her rightful position on this city council. It's been said more times than enough. The time is always right to do the right thing. On January 1st, 2018, an injustice occurred. Councilwoman Shumi Diamond, I challenge you to step down and do the right thing. The people, the people of Long Beach deserves better. And as far as anyone else on this council who partake in this injustice, I can only pray that God have mercy on your deceitful souls.
Ms. Crystal Lake? Is she still here? The bakery person?
Crystal Lake, 206 East Market Street. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
My primary concern at this point, I sent an email to city council members. And I would first like to know, does anyone have any questions? Or did you have ample opportunity to at least peruse the documents?
I actually thank you for sending the historic information. I felt it was very informative for me coming onto the council. Um, I am still in the process of reviewing all of the documents that you sent. I'd like to continue in term, with respect to the links. But I did peruse the documents and I will, would love to engage in a conversation with you with respect to that because I think it would be very helpful in light of the upcoming comprehensive plan and all of the other plans that are taking place within the city.
Thank you for your answer.
If I can just, if I can just add, I know that there was a response to your email from our planning department and that they were going to review the information and digest it and kind of bring it down so that we can, in preparation for the comprehensive plan meetings, really have an understanding of exactly what it is. But I, again, thank you for providing the information and the links. It was definitely comprehensive and certainly very detailed. So I, I thank you for that.
And thank you for your reply. Um, just a brief overview. The information is not new. I've lived here over half a century. Okay, I can put the pieces of the puzzle together very well because I did all the research and I am, have personally been impacted and experienced residential segregation, gentrification, exposure to pollutants and excessive flooding for decades. So that's why I beat the drum as I do. That's why I work tirelessly to disseminate the information that is available because the newbies do not have an understanding. They come with their crown on their heads and have no understanding of what many people have endured. Myself, my- Myself, my children, even my grandchildren, and my community. So, having said that, it's not, um, implementation and the betterment should not always be for the greater good for a few. The first inhabitants of the city of Long Beach were the Rockaway Indians. The first gentrification occurred on East Harrison Street. C Block 277, Change Order 72497. My family home, section block and lot number, 5991, lots 32 and 33. Second gentrification occurring, Stop &amp; Shop, Wallbounds, um, Mall, 5996210. That was also East Chester Street. I get nervous, so bear with me, please. However, being exposed to the second incinerator site, 5979505, I'm good with numbers, okay? That's why I gave an overview of what our circumstances were. This is our home, and it's to the point now where I understand the vision, and not only the B-side, but also the Oceanside. 80 Riverside, 59115, lots 1 through 10. So, having said that, I hope, and I do understand the magnitude of what's going to occur. But having said that, across the board, we'll all have a much better and a greater city of Long Beach if we all do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Catherine Shmenty. I think she might've left from the bakery. Is she still here? No, she left. Uh, Mr. Jordan Farkas? Farkas? Please state your name.
Jordan Farkas, 370 West Olive Street. Regarding Commissioner Tagney stepping up and doing the job as acting city manager, I'd like to point out that, based on former city manager's salary plus health insurance plus benefits, Commissioner Tagney is saving the taxpayers roughly a quarter of a million dollars annually. And I would hope that the city council will cease and desist looking for another city manager as long as Commissioner Tagney wants to stay up there. No, huh?
He's made it very clear that he does not want the permanent position.
Ah, what a shame. And, um, Ms. Moore, thank you for serving us with class and dignity all these years.
Thank you.
It's appreciated. And, uh, Councilman Bendo, how do you like the view?
It's different.
Welcome. Uh, I, I hope our, um, corporate counsel can handle lawsuits. He still looks tired. Huh? Are we gonna be okay with Istar?
At some point, yes.
Uh, are we gonna be okay with Sinclair Haberman?
We're working our way through it.
Good luck, sir. You need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Brittany Littlejohn?
Hello.
Hi, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Brittany Littlejohn, and I don't wanna give my address. Thank you. Alright, so, little show and tell. This is a water filter. You know, it's white, pretty white. Yeah, whatever it's made of. Anyway, this is a Long Beach water filter from my residence that's about six weeks old. Pretty disgusting. And it's like this every month. Six weeks. Two, doesn't matter. I also brought pictures of my in-laws' house in Merrick. This is about five, six months, if you wanna take a peek at it. I mean, fortunately for me, I have a husband who installs these wonderful things, so I can bring things that are gross like this to City Hall, so you guys can see, this is what everybody's drinking. So, that's that. And yeah, it's pretty gross, so I can't wait to throw that out.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Um, it's very clear, clean water is a human right, and so, um, this is a priority for all of us, and hopefully, I guess, the acting city manager, can we get some information out to make sure that we can address this particular issue? Because obviously, you're not the only person that's experienced this. There are other residents that have also experienced this. This is not the first year this has happened. Since my time here in 2016, people have come to meetings complaining about water, and so at this point, the, the residents need some answers.
So, um, it's disgusting.
It's gross, right?
It really is, it really is disgusting. I, too, have a whole house water filter, um, at my house, and it's very similar. We did talk to our DPW commissioner, um, last week. He couldn't be here tonight, he has a, a family emergency, um, but I did want him to come and speak about it. Um, although they do say our water is safe, and it's tested, and the state regulates it, and the state tests everything.
I'm having actually our water sent to another lab, just to compare notes.
Great. I would love to know what the results of that are.
Me, too.
Um, but the one problem that we are having, um, which is pretty consistent, which I don't know if that's what's on there, but when you see the brown water is basically rust.
Yeah.
Um, and what happens is, we had a few water main breaks, and we had a few water mains that froze. And as it was explained to us, I'm not an expert in this, but it was explained to us by the DPW commissioner, it changes the flow of the water, water going from one direction to the other, which brings up, which brings up all the sediment.
Okay.
And, and that's where we get all the, all the brown water from, which is disgusting.
Yeah.
And, and it'll ruin your clothes if you're doing the laundry and the whole bit.
Absolutely. I have three under three, so I do a lot of laundry.
Right, right. So, we're aware, um, Councilman Bendo asked about lining the pipes, which is actually unreasonable, uh, to be able to do that. It's cheaper to actually just start replacing pipes. The good news is, in terms of replacing pipes, each year, you know, it's very minimal, but each year when we do road reconstruction, um, not just the road resurfacing, but when we dig up the entire street, we are replacing all the sewer and water mains everywhere. Um, and part of the problem is that we are on a sandbar, as it was explained to me also by the DPW, which doesn't support the pipes, so the pipes will move and jostle around as the sand, uh, washes away underneath the pipes. Does that change the fact that I don't want my children necessarily drinking that water? No, of course not.
No.
Um, but it is, it is safe. I have to, I have to say that, it is safe. Um, but I will have the DPW commissioner, uh, contact you. I think you have your number.
Yeah.
On the, on the form, right? I think I saw it there. Um, and to see what we can do going forward, besides replacing pipes, that's really the only, only option that we have at this point.
I mean, at one point, they thought the water in Flint was safe, so...
I'm sorry?
At one point, they thought the water in, in Flint, Michigan was safe, and...
Right, right. Well, we are having our water tested for lead. There is no lead in our water. Uh, it's mostly sediment, is what it really is, um, which doesn't, isn't necessarily dangerous, but it is gross.
Yeah.
Um, so I will, I'm gonna take your card right here and make sure the DPW commissioner calls you, um, but also, um, as Councilwoman Moore asks that we start putting more information out to the public. I think we are required to do a public, um, a public analysis of our water a couple times a year? Is it two times a year?
There's a mailing that goes out.
There is a mailing that does go out, and it has all the breakdown of whatever they find in our water.
I know, I've read it.
Each, I'm sorry?
Next.
Each May, the, so he said the water report goes out each May.
If I can, if I can just add something.
Please.
Look, it's a, it's a concern that each of us share. We each receive a number of, of emails, text messages, whatever it is, regarding, regarding the water. Um, we've spoken at length with our DPW commissioner in order to see what else can be done in addition to, look, the process of changing the pipes, and I, I know this is not the answer that you wanna hear, that it's a slow process, um, but that, along with all of the other improvements and infrastructure improvements, are slow and very costly. But in the meantime, we go through the steps that are necessary in, but from the state, as well as local authorities, to ensure that the water is safe. I, too, have the issue. I understand it, and it's, it's not pleasant. But that being said...
But how come?
Wait, hold on, let me just finish. That being said, I think that this is something that the city and the city council, each of us is committed to improving and making sure that whatever can be done is done and as quickly as possible. It's not falling on deaf ears, we're not ignoring it. It's, it's something that we probably send emails and speak about on a weekly, if not daily basis.
Okay, but the water has been an issue since I was a kid. I grew up here. It's like, you know, I hate to age myself, but I'm on the horizon of 32 here. You know, it's been like that for a long time. I mean, we have, my in-laws' house in Merrick, that's six months old. It's, it's clear. It's perfect. You know? I mean, maybe my husband will go and do whatever at his parents' house, and he'll see like one little black spot. Okay, I'll swap it out. He's like, he thought his parents had it in like two days. He, he was appalled when he changes filters like this once, twice a month. It's ridiculous. I've lived in Woodmere, I've lived in Atlantic Beach, never happened before. There, there's no comparison. I mean, it's unacceptable, so.
Okay.
That's it. And, um, lastly, I'd like to congratulate Bendo and Mandel and Diamond for your positions and...
Thank you.
And, um, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Volasevich?
Mary Volasevich, um, temporarily in point lookout. Temporarily point, in point lookout, I'm raising. Um, I just wanted to come tonight, um, on behalf of the Northeast Bank Canal Civic Association. Um, I just wanna let you know that we got absolutely no emails or complaints about the snow removal. Kevin Riley was very good about explaining it. I called him, and, um, we explained to anyone that did call us or get in touch with us, which really wasn't anybody, um, that basically, from what I understood from the CSEA, they remove the snow from the streets, then they remove the piles. It's more important to get the streets cleared for emergency vehicles, um, and our sanitation men. And I just wanted to thank them, because, um, that was not an easy storm. That was 14 to 15 inches, which we haven't seen in a very long time, and I wanted to thank them. Um, it's not easy being out there on the roads, especially when people don't listen and stay in their homes and leave their cars parked on emergency routes. Just doesn't work, folks. So, in any case, thank you, Norman and the CSEA.
Thank you, Ms. Volasevich. And that's the, uh, executive vice president for the CSEA over here, Mr. Norman Wilson. Thank you for the snow removal, Norman. These, those guy, the guys and women of the CSEA worked, many of them worked 24 hours before they went home. Um, so, we, we appreciate that. It, it is some overtime, but it did snow during a, a regular day, so it was overtime thereafter, that is correct. Uh, Ms., Ms. Eileen Hessian?
Just to address that overtime issue very quickly, after working the 24 hours, 16 of which was overtime, they continued to remain on duty to remove the garbage at straight time.
Eileen Hessian.
Go ahead, thank you.
Just two things that I wanna say. One is that I see that the January 25th meeting is the final meeting for the comprehensive plan, and I've gone...
We're still, we're still in discussions about that.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Because I, I thought it would be best if we have our new city manager in place before anything definitive was decided about the comprehensive plan.
Well, this, the city manager works at the direction of the council, so if the council decides to pass the comprehensive plan...
Well, also, the comprehensive meetings, I went to many of them, and they were...
There were 16 of them, yes.
Yeah. They were mostly, um, not definitive. You know, "Well, we might do this, and this picture is not really a good representative, representation of that." So there really was nothing to even ask, because you asked, and they said, "Well, we're not sure." So I think we need a lot more work before anything is done on the, the comprehensive plan. And also, with the city manager, I think a man or a woman who comes in to become city manager, or even if it's a black woman who comes in to become city manager, they would need to know and have some background about this, so I really think it should be held up. That's my first point. My second is that, Mr. Aramo, I keep seeing that you're having fundraisers, and I know you were just elected, so I'm wondering what you're fundraising for?
Um, well, I don't know that, this is more governmental forum, but that's more political, so I, I don't necessarily think that's appropriate, but if you wanna talk afterwards, I could discuss my political fundraising.
Because if you're running for another office, then maybe Anissa could take over the presidency.
If, if...
Just saying.
What I could tell you is, if an elected official is advertising a fundraising event for a specific office, that money has to be for that particular office. Okay?
You just, you were just elected. I don't know, it seems odd. I don't know politics. Thank you.
Mr. William Fuller? Sorry? Good evening, Mr. Fuller.
William Fuller, Long Beach, 30 years plus. I am here tonight to make a request of this council. We all have cause and reasons as to why we seek out higher office and places of authority. Many, if not most, have sought out city council position as a stepping stone to a higher office, through the, through the county, toward the county and the state. The backroom deals have been a method of political favoritism for many generations. Policies among yourselves have been in place for years, such as the top voter getting placement, automatically assumed the presidency of the city council until now. Now, two years ago, when city councilwoman Anissa Moore, in 2016, the po, the policy changed to, to, to every six months, the leadership role would change, and representative would be, would, representatively, that has never happened. Now, this past November, the least voter getter now assumes the political position of the vice president of the council. I want you to know that we have a long history of denial by the privilege. Those who have sat in those seats that you're sitting in right now have denied us, in the context of block grants, UDAG monies that used to come, only obtained through using the North Park area as a target area of blight to get the money. This history goes back to the 60s, when the federal government sent monies to build low-income housing, and the money was spent by then the city fathers. The government replaced the money, and they were told that they had to build what is now Channel Park Home. Now you sit here today and have denied and passed over the highest vote getter in this community, and you still deny her the right to sit in the seat deemed by your own policies. It seems just like yesterday that we were here, extending the virtues of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. In fact, it was yesterday. And we talked about love, we talked about the profound manner, about which kind of love we are referring to. We walked together, shoulder to shoulder, we sat down together, we broke bread together yesterday. Thank you so much. What kind of love are you talking about? It's not heiress, it's not Felipe, it's not ludus, it's not mania, it's not pragma, it's not agapi. The love of God is what passes all understanding. It gives you the place and the opportunity for everyone to afford their rightful place. The young lady came up here with two filters. One, clean and new. Another tarnished by the corruptive nature by what came through it. And you all agreed that the one that had the corruptive nature in it was vowed, by your own admission. You today sit here, and unfortunately, I think that all of this is falling on deaf ears. You are privileged, and you will not even follow your own rules, and you have again denied us our privilege and our right. You say you love her. If I ask you if you love her, you say, yes, I love her. Then you must treat her like you love her. Love is not what you say, love is what you do. And you have denied us, just like for years, it's been done. There is a history, and the history is ugly. And you know what? It's okay. I don't need three minutes to say anymore. You know why? Because it's falling on deaf ears. And if I was you, and I'm sure you're a wonderful woman... If you're a wonderful woman, you would even yourself deny this place because it is an offense to those who elected her.
Mr. Jay Gussler? Kathy Campbell? Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Kathy T. McCampbell. I live on East Hudson Street in Long Beach. I'm very nervous, but I just want to ask a question tonight. The question is, what is it that Anissa Moore needs to learn? Does she need to learn what I've learned over a lot of years? I am guilty of keeping quiet. I have lived here for 50 years, legitimately, this year, 50 years. And I have kept quiet because I was always told, we don't rattle them, we don't rattle them in City Hall. They're going to come down, they're going to come to your house, they're going to check out, whatever. So I want to know what it is that she needs to learn. So I jotted down some things today, and I began to become even more emotional because I began to think of how my thoughts, my thinking process, has rolled over into my children. And it's very bothersome to me, so I'm just going to, you can stop me at my three minutes, but again, my name is Kathy T. McCampbell. I have officially lived in the city of Long Beach for 50 years. My husband and I own property here, just like those of you who now are buying up homes in the North Park area. I can recall attending school with some of the well-known last names here in Long Beach. My parents own two homes here, and ever since I can remember, there's always been some difference placed on the area down there where the MLK is used as a reference point. And I just want to make it clear right here. Whenever you guys want to throw some bone someplace, you throw it to the MLK. But I also own Kathy's Corner of Care for more than 20 years, right around the corner in the North Park area. I've sat in on a few of these meetings and have become further disgruntled over how getting noticed, or getting help, or getting a position here has most to do with who you know and how you can assist in getting candidates elected. Every newly-elected political party that takes over means, in comes all your friends, here comes all your families, still people of color pay taxes, adhere to all the building departments' rules and regulations, and still get closed out of a lot of things. The thing is, if you are black, you never become friend enough. She's never going to become friend enough to you to become anything else than take that seat and not go any higher. Is that true? That's a question. It seems to me that you've made Ms. Anissa ineligible. She's the ineligible enemy, she's the ineligible threat. Why is that? I grew up and I still try to teach my kids, I still try to tell my children something different about this place that I grew up in. I try to tell them something different. I told them they could achieve, they could achieve something good here, when in all actuality, this is what I knew in my heart. When the summer positions were given out here for jobs, all we were able to do was to get that little puncher, the puncher hole in the plastic, so that the people can get on the beach. Okay, it's, that's fine, but I just want to know, what is it that she needs to learn? What is it that she needs to learn? I've sat here several times, and I hear you say about people are opening businesses, and you're discussing about parking spaces. I simply put in a request to see how far it would go. I own a house on East Fulton Street. When 2012, when Sandy hit, people had to go to Hempstead to find some place to live. I asked, could I use my property on the top to become a homeless shelter? You basically told me no, because we don't have any parking spaces. Down in the West End, there's never any parking spaces.
Pastor Fuller? Please just state your name.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Rebecca Fuller. I have been a resident in Long Beach for more than 30 years, and as a resident of the North Park community, I can say, we support councilwoman Anissa Moore. We had done it in the past, we do it presently, and we will always support her. We know that she represents all people in Long Beach, but for the first time, we are proud to have her represent us. We will never move this city forward if we keep doing the same thing and never change. Keeping councilwoman Moore out of the leadership means that this council is not trying to improve race relations in Long Beach. We fought for civil rights in 1960s for a better world. Let us come together in 2018 for a better Long Beach and give the opportunity, not for her to learn from you all, because nothing has changed in this council, but for you all to learn something from her.
Ms. Allison Blanchett?
Please state your name. Allison Blanchett. Just got to give a shout out to Amma, who's in the house. Hello, my friends. Your favorite woke Allison is up here now. God, I just want to echo what everyone's saying about Anissa Moore being the president. It's really, just, just do the right thing. Seriously. Just step down. It's disgusting that you guys call yourself advocates for people, that you call yourselves like into social justice, but you just stepped on a black woman for a power grab. Wrong. Wrong. And I, I don't even want to look, I can't even look at you. I'm requesting that the city postpone this January 25th comprehensive planning meeting. First of all, sustainable Long Island no longer exists. They shut their doors in November. We knew about this back in like October-ish. So there's no sustainable Long Island. Who's overseeing all of this? Second, the last draft hasn't been updated since January 2017. That gives the residents what? Nothing to, no updates from the past year, nothing to look at, to bring with us to this next meeting at all. We don't have a city manager. That matters a lot. The city manager, every city manager comes in and they will give, you know, their own twist, kind of like their vision, they set up City Hall as they'd like, whatever. They need to be part of that process, and the city manager is who is in charge of the heads of these departments. So you are in charge of the city manager, but that person's in charge of the departments who are writing these plans, right? So that's pretty silly. Also, the city has not replaced the two planners, as far as I know. We have no planning department. Who's overseeing this upcoming meeting? Also, we're still sitting on a bunch of idle grants that we haven't seen anything on. There's three grants that I've been waiting for, to look at, that have to do with transportation stuff. Speaking of transportation, there has not been one sentence at any of these meetings regarding transportation. Transportation is a key part of a comprehensive plan, and it's also a civil right. I am requesting that you postpone this meeting until you get your business together up there, till you get your city manager, till you get your city planning department together, till you figure out your problems up here with your presidency, and, you know, just take a little time on that, because this is a very serious document. And when I hear that this might be the last meeting, oh, this will not be the last time you hear from me, or you hear from these people, because that draft plan as is, is nothing but a gentrification plan. It's a confusing plan, the schematics were terrible, and it's, it's a shame. Thank you.
Ronald McHenry? Please state your name.
My name is Ron McHenry, resident here in Long Beach. It just seems the echoing theme here tonight is do the right thing, and it's just so hard for me to ask the council to do the right thing, especially when this last election season, the wrong thing was done, and done constantly again. The community had a nominee, a black nominee, Ronnie Miles. Can we give a hand for Ronnie Miles? And he was nominated by the Nassau Democratic Committee and somehow illegally was pulled off, pulled off illegally against election law. And three people here, right, sitting right here, ran in his stead. He was unable to get on the ballot, and that's not right. And that's not right. So we're just asking you guys to do the right thing. It's hard to ask you when the wrong thing continues to be done over and over. And so tonight, we're asking you to do the right thing. So Anissa, in her election season, was the highest vote getter in Long Beach history. Can we give a hand clap? Even beat Barack Obama numbers here. And in past elections, when the high vote getter is usually becomes the president, but somehow, somehow, the wrong thing was done again. So let's do the right thing. And somehow, it wasn't the first time, the first time it was done to a Spanish man, the first Spanish elected, and his name was Len Torres, and somehow, you guys did that to him, and then he was the least vote getter that season, but somehow became council president. And it was almost like you used a brown man to counsel out the black woman. And so we ask you to stop doing the wrong thing and finally do the right thing. And I understand some of you have your seats doing the wrong thing. We just ask you in this season, in this time, to not continue to trump spirit and do the right thing. And I could continue on, and a lot of people said the right, said this thing over and over again, but I'll repeat after me if you believe in it. When I say do the, do the right, you say thing. Do the right? Do the right? Do the right? Thank you very much.
Ms. Diane Harris? Good evening. Please state your name.
Diane Harris. I'm a member, resident of Long Beach all my life. I wanted, I felt it was important to come out and speak tonight to support Mrs. Moore. I want to speak about a personal experience. I lost my mother recently, and she came out to my family and showed support and love and compassion, and I felt, that felt really special to me. That showed me that she appreciates the community, and she does whatever she has to do to make the community feel good about, you know, elected her, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. So I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Moore, and I hope that you guys continue to keep her on this committee because she's important to the community. You can't, you can't really serve a community sitting behind a desk. You have to be out there amongst the people, seeing their needs and what, hear their stories. That's very important to the community. So I hope you guys reconsider and just see you have a good person in, on your team. And let's keep it that way. Let's let the community grow with good people like Mrs. Moore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mindy Doveberg? Is she still here? Okay. You're welcome. Scott Calley? Please state your name, sir.
Good evening. Scott Calley, I live on Neptune and Shore Road. My, my number one concern to everybody here is beach safety. I think we, we have lifeguards here on nine to six. There's a lot of people that come to our town. We want to, we want to generate a lot of money in this town, we want, we want this to be a successful community. I'm sure everyone does. And we all want to be successful if we work and do. I've given back by giving three years of my life to coaching Pee-wee soccer. I've worked at scuba and surf camps. Beach safety, number one. I've seen people ran over on the beach. I've seen this, witnessed it. I think we need lines on the boardwalk for the bicycles, once again, like we used to have. I really believe that this is a matter of safety. I've been assaulted by somebody on the boardwalk by telling him, excuse me, you're in the bike lane, right in front of one of the officers that's standing in this room right now. I think that we need to have a skeleton crew, a little bit bigger, after 6 o'clock, when people get off of work and they come from wherever they're coming from, and they jump off that train, and they got to pay $15 to get on the beach, $15 at 5 o'clock, because that's what these kids have to do, that people are punching the cards. And then all of a sudden, everyone gets out of the water, and then, you know, after, after five years of working at students camp, and we all know this, the RIT pulls these people back out, because they go back out as soon as the lifeguards disappear. And I've saved over five people in my life, having to jump off the boardwalk with my surfboard to pull people off the rocks. Five people. I lost one black child, I couldn't save him, and he told me I shouldn't have been out there. I had no right to be trying to save this child. I think we need to address this boardwalk, even to the bay. All, this whole town. Bicycle safety, too. People have total disregard for stopping signs in this town. Bicycles, the beach, I think we just need to think about our community as a safe place to live and start respecting each other, because it's not working. It's not fricking working, what's going on here? I think we need to have a bigger crew, maybe till dark, so people can swim till dark. I think that would be the most important thing right now. Let's start at the beach. Let's work our way to the boardwalk. Let's get some lines up there. We've wasted $400 million on jetties that are not going to save us from a hurricane if it really hits. Think about it.
Okay, that's it this evening. I want to thank everyone for coming, and we appreciate your comments, 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 your comments.